Okay. Time being 7:02, we'll call the Halifax Planning Board into session. Members present, Amy Trup, Rick Murray, and Gordon Ambers. On the agenda, we have Josh Liddell, 285 Holm Street, drainage calculations and soil log. pasture lane status, 597 Plymouth Street, request by owner. Zero Monhaza Street, map 95 lot 9, review engineer vote. Minutes to be reviewed and signed, November 4th, 2021. And various correspondence. And that would do it. Do I motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, sorry.
Alright. I get a call from Josh Liddell saying the engineer hasn't completed the calculations, but he believes that they should have him ready for the next meeting.
He wouldn't do things by the next meeting, though?
I believe so.
I think that goes along with what you said the other day, right?
Yeah. He carefully said he wasn't having at this time, but... He's gonna move this so I can see.
Yep. And status on pasture lane hasn't changed. Hasn't been able to communicate with the owners of the leftness of his property. And I have talked to the town council and we're full with him and stuff that he's looking at. 597 Plymouth Street?
I believe I said probably 715 to them so that they'd get here. Can we go back to it?
Yep. And then the next thing would be Zero Monhaza Street. Which we have submission for set point.
Is that in here too?
This has been sent out to the other boards?
Yeah.
The way it works with the site plan is goes to the other boards to get 30 days to make their comments?
Yeah, we're telling them so.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a quick question. Just can I ask questions?
Yeah.
This is basically a temporary, it's like, it's like a view. It's basically temporary. In the spring, this will be buildings and all kinds of stuff, whether it's gonna be football housing or industrial park. Because it's all, we're just still working with National Heritage. We hope it will be done December, January. And then it'll be gone. We're using Dan Malloy. Well, we're using, this is for Joe, let me do this one. But this is basically, this will be like the May-June next year, that's it. No one doing parking stuff.
Dan Malloy is doing a different plan?
Yeah, he's doing a different plan. The building's back there and he's been down parking Saturdays and stuff. I'm not, I don't care. But this is basically temporary. To send it out, you know, if you want to...
That would use for system.
You can send it.
Yeah, which used for system.
Temporary. And what it is, is just, we need to like April, May, and there'll be something else coming on a bit. Because it's, we're still working with National Heritage, very close. It's due, it's 40 acres or something to go back, whether it's gonna be a football housing or industrial park. Hopefully it's the industrial park. There's approximately 40 acres that I think is usable. Because where have we gone out there? The partners have been out there two times. We've had DEP, National Heritage, out three or four times, whatever. This is just a basic cover up, you know, saying we have equipment which we're gonna use in your bylaws so that we can do it. But this is just basically temporary. Till like May or June, we can come back to May or June. If you wanna send it out, that's fine. But we're just doing it temporary. And then we're out of here. You know? I'm not gonna build a park, I'm too old. I'm not gonna do it.
You're gonna sell it?
Yeah, I'm gonna sell it.
Okay.
Now, I'm not, all I wanna do is just cover my butt, that's basically it. And that's it. We're not doing any major, just, my son's posh, he's one, basically doing stuff by himself and then. He has a drive up, he goes every day and drives. It's the only guy in the payroll. And he doesn't work any yet. So basically, all we're doing is just ask until, take this till May or June, we'll come back May or June if it's okay with you guys. And be something different.
Okay.
Because if you wanna talk to the lady at National Heritage, I think your wife has too. Not the energy director, we're very close with that. They've just held us up, hold us up to do anything. Because we had to go and do, we had all flagged, we had to send a person up there, it was like 10 grand just to go over the GPS and do 400 acres. And they had to do it all. We have a plan for that too. I mean, you wanna see it, I'll bring it in, I'll send it up to you guys to look at. But I guess this is basically three acres. That's, when we bought this, this wasn't an National Heritage. Two weeks later after we bought it, it was an National Heritage. It was something you don't know, they can just do it. They can come take your property and, you know. But they can even take your property and just say, okay. Someone said they saw a turtle. But there's been, I've not seen one turtle on a stack of Bible. But you go to Kingston, I built some houses over there, and there was turtles all over the place. But, but they can say they see it and whatever.
Okay.
This is basically what I'm asking. Just give me some time to... Yeah. No, I'm just saying, I don't think you should go to review, because we're not gonna be here that long. I put in writing and everything, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, it's just...
Just breathe.
I have people interested for an industrial park, just, you know, it's just better for the town. Because it also gonna bring in money.
Well, I mean, there's nothing we can do on it for 30 days. It's gonna go for the...
Are we going to meet on the 16th?
Right. But, you know, this is why, you know, to spend money, to send it out for review, I'd rather just, if you want to come back again and talk to you guys, but to send it out, I think it's kind of a joke, because I'm not gonna be doing, it's gonna be gone, springtime, it's gonna be gone out of there.
Well, that'll be good, because the 30 days will be here then.
The 16th?
We received this on November 10th.
Yeah, so she had...
But you don't have time, basically.
Yeah, for that.
You're just, you're not gonna be here. And when the ground freezes, they can't do nothing in here either. Probably another two weeks, at least you can't do nothing. All I'm asking, give me till spring. Accept this till spring, and I'm even telling, you know, May or June, now another set of plans brought in. If you wanna talk to Dan Malloy and want to walk on those, it's fine. He's working with us. I'll give you permission to call if you want, the board members.
Well, at this point here, I mean, what is, are you looking at for us to approve?
Just that's what we have there on the plan, just to say, okay, come back for us, if you're gonna change it, or come back, we'll send it to review engineer, but I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna be gone.
Yeah, like you said...
I just don't want to waste the money and stuff like that.
Not gonna be a lot happening this winter.
Right. Once it freezes, that's it. We had two weeks, maybe three weeks, and it's almost there now. I'm out of here for Florida. Next Sunday for four months, I'm good. It's too cold.
So, again, I guess my question is, what's actually gonna happen here?
Oh, a lot. We had to put it down there for...
No, no, I understand. But what's gonna be the operations gonna happen here for the winter?
Oh, yeah, some piles in there. You can't clean, you can't drop, because it freezes, that's it. Here's some piles, here's some tailings which are gonna take off. We have some stone, concrete and, yeah, we're gonna grind it up to do the roadway when it comes in. Was cheaper, you know, stuff costs now, it's cheaper to have something, can they grind it, mix it up, and I can have my process to do the roadway. The stumps in back here is how we, grinding up, there won't be maybe the 800 yards that grind up and that's gonna be gone too. We've been putting on the trails, when I talked to, because making for the fire roads that are all through that whole place. I don't know if you ever been there, and you were kidding me, but there's fire roads all through the place. So we just put them down to make it so it's easier to drive on, in case there was a fire there. Walking trails for the whole place, but there are fire roads.
How much frontage do you have here?
A lot.
Yeah, I thought so, but like, I'm not questioning it.
It's probably 2,000 feet... Right to the town line, right?
Excuse me, right to the town line, it goes to the power lines, and then goes the triangle piece on the other side also. So it's approximately 2,000 feet of road, if not more.
Okay.
I can give you exact...
No, that's fine, worry, I just, I was just curious.
Yeah, I can give you exact, but it's just like, I think, the triangle piece, I think that's 500 feet, so, with some acres on the other. That's the guy that wants to do pot.
Yeah.
What's that?
The triangle piece, he wants to do pot, he wants to do a...
Oh, that's the other side of the...
The other side, yeah.
Moonlight?
Yeah. Let's say this is the power lines here, and there's a triangle piece here, that's, he's getting trying to get approvals for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, what's the boards feel?
I don't see a problem with it.
The only thing I would think of is, is the tub grinder, the same thing that we were talking about.
It's very quiet, can't hear, and what I'm grinding up is what's there.
And there's nobody around.
There's no, you can't hear it, you can't hear a thing. You, if you want, you come down to the road, I'll start up, Ryan's, you won't hear it.
No, I'm only mentioning it because of the stuff that was going on down at the other industrial park.
Yeah, and I like Clyde. I have no problem with Clyde, what I'm looking for.
I'm not saying anything about it.
And I'm not either, I am not either.
I'm just saying.
He's running the business, just like I'm trying to do, you know, my son, not me. I'm retired, I'm gonna stay retired, I'm done with this shit.
Okay. So the storage is just like an open area?
Correct.
Okay.
And the trucks, well, and they come back, and that's basically it. We have to avoid the park.
Yep.
So basically, that's what it's gonna be?
Basically, yeah.
Trucks in and out to...
Yeah, not a lot, you know, there's not...
No, no, I'm not, but I'm saying, to be able to pack trucks in there.
Correct. And what's there, and I bring it much because it's all going out, because I want it cleaned by, you know, completely just flat by June so I could...
In the meantime, you're gonna grind the concrete and the...
Well, the concrete will stay till I get enough to grind, you know, I didn't bring anything else in, I'm just waiting, because, make sure I could talk to you, I wanted to bring some more, just so I can, it's probably 1,000 yards in now, they won't grind till like this 2,000 yards. But it will be gone down for the road itself. There's also a pile of sand here, which has been here to do, there's riprap too in a pile. This is to do this, once they switch this over to the roadway here, when I get approved with conservation, that's when National Heritage put it in, what do you call it?
Protection.
Yeah, protection. Wasn't in at the time, and then they stopped. So I got 10,000 balls and pipe and the heads, two head walls and stuff like that, and can't put it in until, I mean, you can swear away with that. That's why they put extension on the, three-year extension.
Do you have any other order condition?
But hopefully it'll be elsewhere. I'm just gonna let someone else do it. Let the town make some money, and hopefully the industrial land will be good, you know, if they can, I hope they can come around the whole thing, so they have a horse who can come up by the power lines. There's one, you know, crossing down by the road, but it's all high and dry. Let's see, this is it here, comes down like this, this is wet, well, this is it, here, wet here, this is dry here, you know, comes down right to the road, you gotta, in the spring, it comes through here, and they do a cross again, and it come right out here. It'd be a real nice project. The town should make a lot of money off the taxes.
So that's what Dan Malloy's working on?
Yes.
The toll, the toll package, yeah.
Had a guy call for 40D, but I gotta do the industrial. It's just, it's smaller, you know, because it'll take two years to do the 40D stuff. Nothing really. You're gonna send me from back in June or whatever if you want, or May-June, I'll be back, I'll be back, you know, it's gonna need done, so. Partially. Alright, so...
I don't, I don't see anything that sticks out to me.
You can call me in whenever, if you have a question, you can call.
For the meeting, if you're busy.
No, I understand, it's fine, yeah.
So you'll be back on the 16th, right?
Yeah.
No, 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 I mean, like, you'll be in Florida.
I'll be, I should be back, but yeah. But you get the gist of what I'm saying.
Yes.
It's basically, like I said, you wanna call me, you seem like you know, go ahead and call me, I have no problem. You have my permission to do what you need it.
Alright. So, this is basically day, we're gonna go to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have fun in Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little minutes, I guess. Is it the last meeting?
Yep.
It wasn't there, so we won't be able to do it. This is short, I missed a lot.
I had a wicked head call in more than two minutes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, should we go on to discussion? I mean, correspondence?
Yep.
So, we have the email from Vaveros about Halifax Meadows.
Yeah. I drove out there myself, I don't know, anybody else have been out there?
I've been out there.
So what they've done is taken the, you go in there and you have to kind of go around the cul-de-sac and then, and they're packing all the way around the cul-de-sac. Which wasn't on the plan. I mean, they don't have any business really creating parking out. So I think really what we need to do is call them then, and request that they come in and explain what they think they're doing there.
Right. Just makes it tough for fire engine to go out.
Yeah, you don't have the access there if you stop packing.
Right.
And then they get packing on the roads going in, so, same thing. I mean, you stop packing on the sides, I mean, the width of the road is designed for the traffic.
So why is that? They just didn't have enough designated pack in there? Or just a lot more people with cars there, or...
I don't know, it could be that, you know, they get a lot of visitors.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think it's up to them to kind of try to explain to us what it is there, or something. But if they need more parking, they're gonna have to clear it somehow.
Okay.
Because I definitely agree with you.
Yeah.
If you stop packing there and you get an emergency, we get problems.
So why don't we make a motion to send out a letter to...
Halifax Meadows?
Yeah. To have them come in and explain about the parking around the rotary.
Okay, is that the motion?
Yeah, unless you recommend anything to be added.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we had an email, the webinar. Anybody interested in registering for that?
No.
Not the town notices. I don't think we see anything there.
I wonder if we have anybody on Zoom that is for 597 Plymouth Street? Somebody's talking. Oh, that was us.
The only people on Zoom are James, Perry, and Bob Ross.
Oh, okay. Are we the fourth party, is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Caesar.
You're welcome.
So what's really doing down there by the cow wash?
Oh, I stopped down there to see them the other day, and they said they're doing a detention on there.
Is this between Park Plaza and, are you talking across the street?
No, it's right next to, between the cow wash and the plaza there.
Okay.
And they said that they're doing a septic, and I stopped up and talked to Bob. So, originally what they had was that building that's out there by itself, that was the treatment plant for the laundromat. And then from there, that was pumped out to a septic out in the back. And then their main septic system is up off of Putter's Way, and that's failed. So they've gone to the border health, and they're putting a new septic in where the laundry septic was before, they're gonna take that out and we do that for the building. But I had asked them, I said, well, you know, what's going on? You haven't been in with a site plan or anything here? And so, you know, we were told we didn't need to. And I said, well, you've done something with that building, so, and you got a sign on there now saying it's for rent. You definitely need to come into the planning board. So he said that he would come into our next meeting.
Didn't we send him a letter about coming in?
No.
Oh, I thought we had motioned that.
To who? I'm sorry.
Park Plaza.
The Park Plaza, yes, I'm sorry. So they own that field as well?
Yeah.
We did, I've called numerous times, I've emailed them, they haven't answered.
Yeah, well, I spoke to him on the, I spoke to the owner on the phone. And he said that he would come into the next meeting.
Okay. I can, I can email them the contact that I have. It's Tracy, and I asked them to...
So you're saying the septic failed, the region failed for the cow wash?
Not, not the cow wash.
The laundromat that used to be there?
There used to be a laundromat, yeah. And so that building was the treatment plant for that. And then that was treated there, and from there it was pumped out to the field. If you're driving in now, you can see the dent pipe out there, where it was, you can see where that was. But the system for the building is up off of Putter's Way. They don't have access from Putter's Way. So what Bob told me was that the neighbor wouldn't give them access to go across there. So they would have to go up through the way that they've got it now to even fix the system that's failed. So they decided that they would take out the other one and put it down there.
They did go to conservation in May, and they approved that little woodsy area to be removed.
Okay. But it looks like they're getting ready to pave all that area there too. So I said, you know, if you're gonna start paving that, you need to come back to the planning board.
I seen they've been like mining to fill out the back and bringing it up front. So it seems like they're doing, they're digging, I don't know where they, is there a little hill there, are they digging a hole, or what?
There's, there is an incline that goes up there, and then there's quite an incline that goes up to where the existing septic system is. So that must be what it's coming out of. You're right, I mean, it seems like if you're gonna do that, you bring it in.
Yeah, just bring stuff in. Doesn't seem like you're gonna gain a lot.
No, you're gonna have to fill it all.
Yeah. It looks like they're having fun, isn't it?
Yeah. So what was the update on that? Did that other person want to call in? Do you have a number, can you call, please? Because that's what Davis Automotive?
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna see if that's them, they don't know where they're going.
Okay. What's the date of our meeting in January, the second meeting?
January 6th.
The second, the second one in January?
The second one, I think, that's on the, the 20th, the 20th?
20th.
He's here. Okay.
Hi.
Hey.
Evening.
Okay. This is the application for a sign at 59, 570, sorry, Plymouth Street, for Davis Automotive. And...
570 or 597?
597.
Did I say the wrong name? Sorry, I mean number, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
David, what is you doing, trying to do?
It's the electronic sign posted in the press. Do you want me to show a picture of it?
Sure.
Slide this one.
Is it just gonna be between the two posts that you have existing?
Yeah, you put two posts, and you put, that one for regular, that one for the visa from both sides.
Okay.
And it's not lit?
It's not lit?
It's not lit, no.
Are there gonna be lights on it?
No, no lights.
No lights at all?
No digital at all?
No digital. They are digital, they light up by themselves.
Oh.
And the whole thing is not light up, like the mobile across the mass.
Okay.
The same as that?
The same, yeah.
Which, this is mobile in their application and anything from the planning board that has been done before, if anybody wants to look through it. And this one's Cumberland Farms. You're not gonna enlarge the sign, right?
No, it's the same here.
Okay.
I think I gave the diagram for the sign, okay?
Five feet more, and it's five feet there.
Okay. Okay.
Will it be lit all night long?
No.
Will you shut off when the station's closed?
Yeah, but during the summer, probably six to seven.
So that's just a single post now for that sign?
It's gonna be two posts.
Yeah, you're gonna put two of them, but the one there now is just a single post?
That one is single, it's gonna be that, yeah.
Yeah, I think you have to apply for a special permit for that, though.
Yes. Um, I did go see the chair of the Historical, um, Commission? Is it Society or Commission? Historical Board?
Is that historical district, man?
Um, and he said as long as they were off at night, and, um, he would like to see a picture of it.
It's the same as, as the old one. The old one is only on post with like six feet on the top. And the one is gonna be the one with six feet, so the same thing. It's basically updated.
I know that, um, Historical is gonna ask for a picture, so I can show you what mobile used. And, do we have one? It's in this pile, yeah. It's, we're not sure. But it'll just make it a lot smoother if you can get us some sort of, with, you know, like visual, I'm sure. Okay.
This is what mobile presented.
The design?
Yeah.
That's, that's what they gave for a picture.
All right, now we get one of these.
Okay. Do you want a copy of that so you can, okay.
So you, you have to file with the Historic District as well?
Historic District.
Who saw that the application was on, and you couldn't pick up?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
You, you got all that information from the email from Heidi? So make sure you got all that.
Yeah, I wanna apply for this, actually.
Yeah. And would we be able to get them on the next? Probably not until January, right? Because of the advertising for the special permit, it'll probably be January the next time we can get them on?
Um, I'm not really sure. I'm actually, so the deadline, so the application, so yeah, so the, in January, to make it for the January 6th plan, you'd have to have an invite, his application invite December 13th.
Okay. So you...
The application will need to be by 13th of December to make it for the January 6th.
Because there's a special permit, we have to advertise it to the townspeople? So, um, if you get that in by the 13th, then we'll get it advertised, and then the first meeting in January, we can look at your application with the picture and take care of it. Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So just the picture right now, and the application for the special permit?
Mm-hmm.
What else? That is the...
Yep. Do you want us to write it down? These are the bylaws I gave you the other day, so I'll just write it on the back of these. Okay. Um, historical app. Special permit app. By December 13th, 2021, for Joanne. What's the date of the first meeting in January?
Six.
January 6th.
Okay. And a picture. Of proposed. You bet. You're welcome. Thank you.
So did, excuse me. So you gave the email that told you about...
Did you, um, sign in for us if you would?
Yes, sure.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, I spoke to Town Council about coming in and talking to us to go over form A's, subdivisions, any questions anybody has. And he suggested that January 20th, if he could, that works for everybody. So if you have any questions, um, you know, get them ready. We can shoot into them ahead of time if, if you have something specific.
Okay.
So when he comes in, he can be prepared to answer whatever. But I asked him to come in and just kind of go over the general things with everybody, cause it's kind of a new wood. And if anybody's got questions of how things work or whatever, we get it worked out. And then he can talk about writing decision orders and stuff like that, so everybody has a feel for that as well.
You want that to January 20th meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
Should we send anything to Pasture Lane saying, like, we're getting attorney advice on what to do? And, I mean, they're not gonna be able to do anything now, right?
Obviously.
Because the plants are closed, right?
I don't know that they're closed, but there's a time to...
No, they're not closed. It's just the weather dictates that, you know?
Yeah.
No, it's kind of getting late to start something if you're gonna do any paving or anything in there.
And ZVA Country Club Estates 40B is continued to January 12th?
Did anybody get to that last meeting?
They didn't have it.
Oh.
It was continued.
Just a very short continuation.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, the, the only other thing I wanted to bring up is maybe as far as the secretarial. Kind of, if we could focus on maybe going through the files and reworking the files to the street addresses.
I'll help you.
I know, but either both ways in the, in the file.
Yeah, I mean, it's crazy, cause it, it, some of it's under, like...
The names and stuff.
The name of the business, and the businesses are no longer there, and, um, some of it's by street address. But, um, it's kind of hard to follow any of it.
I know. Through experience, trying to find something.
Yeah. And, uh, I had talked to Caesar about, if we're gonna go through that, maybe we ought to look at digitizing.
They were talking about that, and they brought a company, and that kind of was, you know, going overlooking. I haven't heard anything about it recently. I'm not sure if it's still a go, but that's what they were talking about doing.
Yeah. But, but I think if we could take our folders and kind of get them organized first, it, it would make even digitizing the stuff a lot easier, because if we have, you know, 501 Ponsett Street, and there was four different owners in there, but, you know, you, you find it by the address.
Right.
And, and we can go back through if they're talking about a site plan or whatever that we had at one point. It would all be in that folder.
Yeah, some of the folders are, are this big.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's not exaggerating.
Yeah.
They're like, because, like you're saying, there's different names, the projects have different names. Obviously, man, there are different names, different owners, so it's in there from, you know, for years, from years.
And, and the thing of it is, if we get a plan, we can't just disregard that plan and throw it out. We have to keep the plans, cause that's public record. So, but like you said, those, those folders get bigger and bigger.
Oh, yeah, and there's, there's no room in any of the drawers to put in with those plans.
But, but, you know, somebody comes in, I think Mon Ponsett Street, I talked to you about that before, was the liquor store up there? I mean, it was Gentiles, and there was the...
Alanas?
Alanas, and then there was another restaurant in there.
Pogo's?
Yeah, there was Pogo's. I mean, but, but you'll find those folders throughout the four drawers in there.
Right, cause I think over many, over the years, with many different secretaries, everybody had their way of doing it.
Right.
Sometimes you'll see it in the same drawer. Some of them are alphabetical, some are by the street.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
I, and I know it's a thing that it takes time to do, but I'm just saying if we could put that on, on track to, to do and, I mean, it's, it's hard, because you, you're gonna start in one drawer, and then you get to the next drawer, and some of the same stuff is over and over.
I would gladly come in, like, on, um, you know, a time that maybe we don't have a meeting that week, or maybe on a Thursday when you're prepared for an office. If you wanna log in sometime, I can do that with you. I can help you.
Gordon?
Yes.
Can I, can I just say something? With the digitalization, we're in the process of digitalizing the, the paper workflows. We're working on that with the Board of Health right now. That doesn't prevent the planning board from going to their files and digitalizing them on a greater scale? But as you guys, if you guys all look to your left, that big copier right there scans plans. So obviously, and Joanne has used it to scan and make copies several times, and I know that, you know, she's right there. And a number of turnovers, particularly in the regulatory secretary positions. And everyone has their own filing structure. If we do scan plans, I can verify with the supervisor of records at the state level to confirm if we can get rid of the paper copy. I believe that is something we can do if space is also a concern. So if...
Yeah, I mean...
If, if you guys go through those files and you guys wanna get rid of some of the older paper plans, we should be able to get rid of the paper copies if we have them electronically archived.
Yeah, I, I, when I was saying we couldn't get rid of the plans, I didn't mean if we digitized them, but, you know, just in general, we can't get rid of them. But, yeah.
Well, I know. You have, if you take a trip down to the basement, you'll see the evidence.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. It sounds like we're all on the same page, then. All right.
And Joanne, I'm also more than happy to help you as well. It is a daunting task.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, so, that sounds good. Okay. So Pasture Lane, um, I started saying, and I don't know if I finished, so sorry if I'm repeating myself. The town, um, should we, like, let them know? I am repeating myself, but we didn't really talk about whether or not you thought this was a good idea to let them know, like, hey, we're going to Town Council now. Maybe it would push a little bit on them?
I, I don't know. I mean, the dialogue has gone back and forth, back and forth. That's why, you know, I wanted to pursue Town Council. Larry Nail had worked on it for a while. We have a new Town Council. I just wanna bring them up to speed and see if, you know...
It pretty much comes down to how the agreement was when the subdivision went in?
No, well, not really. I mean, what it comes down to is that they have an obligation to finish that road. They really shouldn't have transferred title of anything in there. So it, it may be that we need to go to Town Council and, and start a court proceeding against them for transferring the title to, to light the fire up. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know. But the problem is, is we keep having dialogue back and forth, but there's nothing happens on the ground.
Nothing that happened that I've ever seen from day one, since I've been here.
Yeah.
One talk, but nothing, nothing happens.
So...
And we'll definitely never not bond a road again.
No, no. Or not.
They do have the option to choose which way they wanna go. Whether they wanna put up cash or they wanna put up a bond, that is up to them. The, the state allows them to choose.
Yeah.
The town can allow to take the lots, but I, I don't see us ever doing that again at this point.
No.
When times are good, everything's worth a lot of money, then that works. But as soon as times get a little dip and it, the lot's not worth as much, then that goes on the back burner. They move on to something else.
It seems like the, uh, the lot they leave is the worst one than that.
Well, that one up there, we actually kept the worst one, which was a mistake as well.
If it was one of the most desirable lots, it would have been a whole different ballgame.
There's another subdivision that has the worst lot left, too.
Yep.
Actually, two, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Which one is that one?
Um, the one off of, um, Pond Street and one off of 36.
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion to it, Joanne.
Is there a second for that?
A second, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a wrap.